There we go. All right. This Chairman Mike McCoo calling to order the town of Wellington budget hearing Tuesday, April 5th, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh four P M. First order of business is presentation of the proposed two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, also known as fiscal year twenty-three, general government and board of education budgets. Do we have? Does anyone need the handouts that are over here? Anybody in the audience need handouts? Make sure those aren't our copies. Bring it to the table. Grab me one more. Yeah. I'm not sure which one I got. Okay, so this meeting's a little unique for us only because we're in hybrid mode, which we don't have a lot of practice with, at least on this board. So I'll just remind everyone in the audience, you are being picked up by the YouTube video recording and everyone out there on that on Zoom is hearing you in the background is at least as background noise. So try to keep the background down, but if you're speaking, make sure to speak really clearly so that we make sure it is documented. Thank you. Okay. I don't even remember how we typically did this. Did we go through? It's been three years since we did this in person. I guess we'll start with questions. Well, all right, so the highlight. Yeah. Oh, I didn't grab it. I thought it's on the back of the agenda. I saw it was agenda and I thought it was just the agenda. Okay. Sorry, some logistics going on there. Okay. So the highlights, and I think for any of you who have been on the previous meetings, you probably know these numbers fairly well already. The general government total increase is a five point seven seven percent. The educational, the combined educational budgets, which is our K through eight plus the district nineteen, is an overall combined increase of two point six five percent. Revenue we're estimating right now to be down point two eight percent. What that ends up leading to is an increase in taxation of three point four six percent. And then reduced fund balance application because we applied a lot of fund balance last year by of over fifty-three percent reduction, which means overall increase of taxation of seven point nine four percent. And that is a mill rate change of one point two eight mils, which is the number we've been talking about the last couple of meetings. You want to get to questions from the public? Number three, so I guess so. You want to get all those handed in? So, hey. What you just there?
I was.
All right, so you're no longer a co-host.
No.
I don't know who we should, who should we make a co-host, Erica, if we drop this again? Jim, I don't think is set up for this. Jim, are you on a computer where you could manage being co-host?
He really just needs to wait there.
I have audio only mic.
Okay. All right. You're coming in as two devices right now, so can we get rid of the other one? Yes, see if you can get that second one. You can get rid of that one because here he's got an echo going on. Well, see the one up in the top right there, Jim going in the tile.
Is he calling in?
Okay, all right, I should. Is he there, Jim?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, let's hope this stays stable for now. Okay. So. Sure. Okay. So people who are on Zoom, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your little hand or turn on your camera or unmute and call out your names. All right, let's go to the room. Who? Comments, Steve Beck? Ralph Toles.
Ralph Toles, forty-seven bills a row. I have a simple question, probably a very complicated answer. I know that there's some concern about the work performed by the assessor we no longer have. This question was attempted to be asked last night at the board of selectmen's meeting, but wasn't conveyed very well. The concern that I have, and I think that most taxpayers will have, is what's the effect of any potential errors in the grand list on this budget and the mill rate?
The little bit I know is that there is some question, but I think Erica would be in the best position to answer what we do know.
Sure, I can tell you that as we work to to continue in the assessor's office, some things have been discovered. Errors have been discovered, both in favor towards the town and towards a resident. So it's not as though the grand list will be redone. I don't, I don't have a number of what an overall change would look like. But, you know, we're correcting errors as they're discovered, again, as we continue work to maintain status in that department.
So if there's a I mean, a few dollars here and there isn't going to make any difference, but if there's a significant difference in the grand list, it would alter the revenue produced by taxation, right?
Good, so I could tell you, most recently we discovered a home that's not on the grand list at all. It looks like it's been on for at least two. But there are other things that are being corrected that do not involve taxation. So there's a multitude of corrections that we're seeing at this point. So an overall number. I don't have that for you guys. It is an ongoing assessment in that department.
So if it turns out to be significance, we're going to have to maybe reconvene and decide how to adjust the budget, right? Because, for example, if the grand list turns out to be significantly lower than what is plugged into this calculation, then the revenue produced by the mill rate isn't going to be enough.
Right, well, that's correct, but the adjustments that we're seeing now aren't significant in that, in that context. So not enough that, you know, we're not seeing millions of dollars in revenue. Enough to adjust, so, you know, I don't have a number for you. There are small errors that we've seen at this point. Could there be more? It would mean going through every single file, and that's not what's happening. Apparently that's where we're continuing the work in that department and making discoveries.
So do you have any? Do you have any kind of an idea of the timeline where you'll feel fairly confident in the grand list? Do you think this process will take a couple of months?
It's not as though we're going through every item.
I understand that.
So I have, I have confidence in the grand list as it stands. There are some errors in some reportings and some that go back farther than just this grand list. So and some don't have anything to do with the taxation portion. It's their mapping issues and some other filing and status issues. So I don't know the answer to that, but as the significant adjustments are made, we'll share those.
Okay, so if we have, if we have some net effect, we'll have to have another meeting or we'll have to bring it up at a meeting.
Right, but it's not going to change the, the grand list number that we're using because that's not going to change the grand list. It's filed. It's already been filed. And the unfortunate part is those errors came after our assessor filed the grand list. It would have been, well, it would have been nice to know that the work had been done correctly prior to.
Of course.
But we're picking these things up after. So the work of Rachel Pierce, who was a former assistant assessor and a current assistant assessor, worked diligently with B A A to make some adjustments so that they could make adjustments to the current year. So it will balance out and then other things are picking up as we go. I, you know, I believe they've gone through the bulk of the large issues now. So I think we might find some small things as they come up.
So at this point, to summarize, you're not expecting a major change?
No.
And the grand list was already established, so that's a method of calculation, but it could, if there is a significant loss or drop down in what the grand list should be, we may have to address that.
I think what's more likely is to make things that were accurately reported on the grand list, so it could have been increased. That's how I'm.
Okay. So you're, you're not expecting anyway, with unknowns, of course, you're not expecting a big drop.
But that's a department where until you're looking at all of those files, you're not going to see errors. So some of these things have come to light with residents who are waiting for return phone calls or emails from the assessor, and when he was gone, they couldn't get that.
Now you're trying to get a cut off, right, right? Ralph, do you have a follow-up?
Sorry, just to give a follow-up, like, I think that any, any unknown issues are going to come to light at the end of June or early July when the bills go out. And if people see a substantial difference in their tax obligations, that's when it's going to hit the proverbial fan. And I just hope everyone is aware that the possibility exists. I, I'm not trying to predict doom and gloom or anything like that. It's just a concern that I have as a, as a fellow taxpayer.
Understood. Stephanie, do you have a comment on that?
I just wondered, are the changes all in one direction?
No.
Okay, so some are going up, some are going down. And then, and what, what is the precipitating, you know, information that you have that you're working off of to finish up before you're satisfied? Is it?
So some of it is, I can tell you when Rachel went in there, her, her assistant assessor was very new, so she's learning. Rachel came in and was able to, first of all, tackle the things that were left on the former assessor's desk and start to go through those files, and that's where we found the bulk of things. And some others came from notices that went out as a result of the grand list filing, and so those folks then called the office and we started to work through those. So at Rob's point, once tax bills go out, if people have questions about their assessments, at that point, they'll all be dealt with on an individual basis.
All right.
Laura Semenbaum, on that same topic, I'm on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and we had a set of those items that the former assessor had actually found, but he didn't take any action on it. So they were just sitting there. So at our last Board of Assessment Appeals meeting, we approved those changes. And again, they weren't huge. I mean, there wasn't particularly one direction or another direction. But I just wanted to clarify that it was things that he had found that were just sitting there that he had never processed, so we had approval because they'd been sitting there for a while. And my second thing is I would encourage the Board of Finance to let the voters vote on this one. We have a hard, you know, nobody likes to see their taxes go up, but we also have to be and we have to pay employees, and I think we need to let the voters decide if this budget is a good budget, and I think it is. Thank you.
More public commentary, questions? Mr. Washinsky.
Yes. I got a little problem with Fund Seventeen. People do not know why it was formed. Well, back twenty, twenty-five years ago, we were getting money from the insurance company. The town said, well, why don't you give us some money? We'll invest it for you. And we provided a stipulation at the end that this money would be only used for replacement of fire equipment, like a fire truck. When's the last time the town won fire trucks for us? They haven't. When did you get a rescue truck? They didn't pay for it. What about an ambulance? They didn't pay for it. Fund Seventeen paid for all this stuff. And if you're going to take out fifty thousand dollars out of Fund Seventeen, plus ten thousand dollars you took out, reengineering fees at South Burlington Station, plus a thousand dollars you take out every year, and plus we just donated to the Board of Finance for my tower money, the money we got from Union into to pay all this, and you still pay fifty thousand dollars now. Mike, you got to realize something. If you keep taking money out of this fund, you're not going to have enough. It's going to be like Social Security. If they keep taking it out, you may collect it, but your kids will never collect it. This is not going to be enough money there. And the town cannot afford to go out and buy fire trucks and rescue trucks for us. If they, you take all the money out of fund. That's what I'm saying. You've got to realize, take it out of somewhere else. C I P is a wish list, right? They're going to wish, we're going to get this, this, this. Take some money out of that. What about our rainy day fund? Or do we have one? Where's the money, you know, that we put in for reserve? Where, can we take some of that money and use it? But you got to realize, if you keep taking it out, South Burlington Department works their ass off, by my French, to get this money to the insurer. They go out at all kinds of hours, nights and days and weekends, when everybody else is sleeping, home in their nice warm beds. They're out there getting money in for us. So if you're going to keep taking it out, you're not going to have it. And if you don't like the ambulance, call Uber. Don't come in, did you? They only charge you one way, so what the hell's the difference? But you've got to realize this. And the Board of Finance doesn't realize it. I'm going to tell you something. We're going to be aggressive. Even like the town roads, they're going to hell. They're falling apart now. How many roads in the Commonwealth in the state of Connecticut got dirt roads left? We still do, and it costs you more money to make it. So you keep taking money out, taking money out, zero budgets. Look at the recreation budget. That's a nice budget. What? Recreation is more important, I guess. I don't know. That's their view, so that's all I got to say about, you know, Fund Seventeen. If possible, can we restore that money back if there?
As you know, Bob, I understand Fund Seventeen very well. And I think we've talked about it a lot on this board and in C I P. And the taxpayers probably have the least understanding of it just because they're not as involved in how it's handled and all that. Everything you said is important, but there are some important clarifications. One thing, for years, we've been hearing the same line about the taxpayers don't buy fire trucks because Fund Seventeen buys the fire trucks. And that's a little misleading, not intentionally misleading, but it's misleading because the taxpayers do buy the fire trucks. The taxpayers put all the money in that becomes Fund Seventeen. The taxpayers right now, like in the current fiscal year, are putting up about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of taxpayer money to fund the ambulance salary and the ambulance repairs and everything else. That money then pays for those people, as you talked about, who go out day and night hours and run around serving people and saving lives, which is all very true and very important. And then Fund Seventeen is produced by the revenue from the ambulance. So that's where the money comes from. It's the taxpayers' money that goes to funding the ambulance, and then it's revenue that's produced. So when that's Fund Seventeen is used to pay for fire trucks, it is the taxpayer money. It's the taxpayers put the money in to produce that. So it's going to come from somewhere, right? The cost of the fire trucks is going to come from somewhere. The cost of the salary is going to come from somewhere. If you look at the contract that's signed between the departments and the town, it says Fund Seventeen can be used for, and it has a list of items. And that includes salary. And it's actually when, in a lot of the discussions, when Fund Seventeen was created, the fire department wisely wanted to protect that money from the Board of Finance taking it and using it for other things.
Yeah.
Right? They wanted to make sure that the Board of Finance didn't say, oh, look at this cash. We're going to put it into the schools or the roads or whatever. So that list was made, and on that list is salary for the ambulance people because the idea was if that money's produced in the fire station, it should go back to the fire station first, and that's exactly what we're doing. We're putting salary, we're putting it right back into the salary. So the, the taxpayer money funded the salaries. The salaries then could go out and do the work, the humans could do the work and produce that revenue, and now some of it's going back into salary, just as some does every year, like you said. It's just a bigger chunk this year because our tax increase was going to be two point two mil.
So I realized everything's going up. You've got to pay for it.
Right.
Town just want a three, three mil, and then they're very happy over there. Come on.
So you would have, you would have preferred two point two mil increase? Okay, well, that surprised me to hear, but it's important. I'm glad to hear.
You know what I'm saying? If you keep cutting, 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 what are we going to end up with?
Right, so were you on the meeting last week when you're, when Chief Moore said that there was plenty of, in the C I P meeting, that he felt there was plenty of revenue in Fund Seventeen, and the forecast was solid? And he felt that it could fund the ambulance, which we had originally talked about holding off one year because of the cost. He said it can support this, so you know, those, those are some of the conversations that we have. For one, I, I, yes, to clarify, for one year. Yeah, and that, that is the fear is that if this were to be the trickle effect of next year, that we try to do another fifty thousand, that funds depleted. Yes, I agree, and fund forecasting is an important job over at Board of Finance, too. We spend a lot of time talking about fund forecasting on C I P also. Right. And so we have, we do try to look to the future, but we also have to work with the year we have. Right, so that's.
Like I say, but salary is different.
But it's in the contract.
We're talking about equipment we need to survive.
Right, and we're buying equipment.
We're buying it, but the insurance is paying for it, right? That's what that money is.
I don't know.
I'm saying, you know, insurance, every day we go out, we, we got insurance money.
Bob, I understand what you said, but the new ambulance, the second ambulance.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about Fund Seventeen.
Right, I understand that, and you said Fund Seventeen buys ambulances, and that's true. That's absolutely true. I'm agreeing with you one hundred percent. So settle down for just a second. The other thing is that the second ambulance is not coming out of Fund Seventeen. It's coming out of taxpayer dollars. So we, we can't say all the money from Fund Seventeen goes to, to, to do equipment and taxpayer dollars goes to equipment and taxpayer dollars goes to, to salary and this and that, and then Seventeen just keep building up till we can buy a new truck. I think that's a good idea. We, we just can't afford that right now, the way I see it, all right? And, and, and you and I may end up disagreeing on that. But Fund Seventeen does, does allow for the payment of salaries, and there is equipment coming from taxpayer dollars that's not Fund Seventeen. And our laws.
Every year we hear.
It's still taxpayer dollars.
When are we going to be able to afford? That's my question. Thank you. I'm sorry if I did.
No. Like I told you outside, this is what we're, we're supposed to discuss this stuff.
It just annoys me when, when originally the town, we had a agreement with the town to get millions, seven, eight split between through the market. Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay, what happened when they did a rebound? Oh.
That's going to be too much money.
Oh, yeah, each going to get a million dollars each. You can't have that. Give me a break, will you? And then they said, give us a budget, and we'll take care of it. First couple of budgets for two, I, ever since then, we've been fighting.
I agree with that one hundred percent.
I'm just coming back. All you people here are pups compared to me, you know? And, you know, I think two all these people.
Bob, I'm a pup compared to you too, but I remember that because I just, I just started when all that happened.
This is what I'm saying, is that you, people don't realize the bad. And what we've worked for all these years, now it all sort of, it seems like they can, they can, they, well, they can. Like I say, Social Security, if it was left alone for it was used for, everybody would be happy.
Yes, that we can't fix here.
I know it can't be, I do like.
Jim Doolittle.
I just want to make a couple of comments about that we're always cutting, cutting, cutting. I mean, this is, we started out with an increase in spending. We've talked about, hey, ten percent is a tough thing to voice on. And we've worked and negotiated and prioritized to get to where we are right now, a four to four percent increase. But it's still an increase in spending, and some areas are going up ten percent. Public Works, they're going up ten percent. Nobody got a ten percent raise, I guarantee you that. Most people.
What did the renovation do? What did they get?
Most people got a two and a half percent raise. They probably, our, our grand list, I, I think grew about a little over three percent. And inflation's running around seven percent, so anything north of seven percent is extremely unreasonable. But I just want to clarify the point. I think, I really want to commend you guys because you really are walking that fine line. There is no cuts here. This is an increase over last year, and it's a hard line to walk, and I thank you guys for taking the time to do that, including C I P. Thank you, thank you.
Public comments, more comments?
John Blessington, twenty-nine Mason Road. I understand that there are some people who would like to, would be happy to pay more taxes, but I tend to thank more people who are fixed incomes and paying more taxes than they real burden on them. I saw that the Human Services Director made, made a comment that people are really hurting this year, especially the counties in the tank, and that the, some people have depleted their savings and are going to be really hurting on paying taxes. And in her case, because of that, I could see probably an increase would be well warned on that. But we, but can we find some place to cut? Everybody wants everything. You know, I, here's my request, and my request is is vital, and if you cut one penny from here, it's going to mean the end of civilization as we know it. And I was looking at the ten point eight percent increase on Public Works. Can we, we need to, and also, I'm not quite sure I understand, there's also an excavator and a dump truck, but that's been put under the capital reserve?
But those are in the, those are in the capital plan, the C I P plan, and they are coming, they are planned to be funded. The dump truck was planned to be funded out of reserve, right? Yes, one hundred and twenty-five thousand of it from reserve to spread it over two years. Originally was going to be two twenty-five in the budget year we're planning now, and it was split to be, well, it was split to be one twenty-five in this budget year and then lease payments for the remainder. To, to say it clearly, and then the excavator was, is that a lease in the plan? Was that a strip? That was reserve also.
Okay.
So they're coming out of the bank account. They're not, they're not affecting the tax bill in this coming year. But it is money being used that won't be available in a future year, like the conversation about forecasting funding in the future.
Right, so that's actually the ten point eight percent is, doesn't cover, doesn't count, isn't counted as that, so they're really getting.
That is not counted in the ten point eight percent, right?
Increase in that.
And I will just, I do want to point out one thing. I'm not trying to defend the Public Works budget in particular, but just keep in mind the Public Works budget does carry a few things that are not in Public Works. Like the big fuel increase, not only affected Public Works, but it affected the fire departments. And their fuel is paid for in the Public Works budget. So some of that increase is not theirs.
Right.
I don't know the exact dollars. I don't have that breakdown with me, but that's, it's, it's a lot of money.
I get what you're saying, but it still is a very large increase in a year where the tax, well, any year tax increases are hard to bear, but this, this year might be much, uh, much worse. I also have a question about the library. They're getting a 7% increase this year, I think, and they had a similar increase last year. And, um, I don't see the necessity for these increases. And you may, may or may not know that the library had a director many years who was getting paid about the average for, uh, small town libraries in Connecticut. Now they have two direct, co-directors, each of who is getting paid what the, uh, what the single director was getting paid in the past. And I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
Well, that's been a topic of a lot of discussion working with the, over the last, uh, probably three budget seasons, at least the last two budget seasons. And there was a lot of kind of moving around and changing of salaries to help pay for that. And they are, we've, we've quizzed them a lot about that. And they have been pretty adamant and supported their reasoning for needing to do that.
Okay. And also their cleaning budget, their cleaning fund. They had hired someone to clean the library. Then they, uh, then they, but then they changed the budget. They let the cleaning person go so that they could hire the same company that cleans the town office building here for $9,000. And at the end of the year, well, they hadn't hired them and hadn't spent the money. So they decided that they all had cleaned the place, so they're going to split it among themselves, which I thought was probably not, uh, not really kosher. And I wonder if that is continued.
I don't have any information on that. If you think there's some sort of malfeasance, you should put an email, send an email in to me, to the board. And if it, if it looks like it merits looking into, we can certainly do that. But we, we'd have to see what the details are and understand if it's something that's even in our purview. Um, you know, because we have, we have departmental budget approval.
Yeah.
Um, if we're going to get into the weeds of the specific individual things that the department is spending on, then it has to be something that raises a concern about are the taxpayer dollars being misused or something to that effect. I'm not saying your concern is good or bad. I'm just saying, put it right and send it in. And if it merits looking into, we'll look into it because our, our job is to protect the taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
Can I just ask you to repeat the name of your road on the newer section?
Mason.
Mason, okay, thank you.
Like jar. Yes. Anybody else? All the way in the back?
Earl Pearson, Black Furby Road. What is the process for maintaining or replenishing the capital reserve fund?
So a certain amount of money is put in each year from taxation. There are essentially, there are essentially two sources of income to feed the town's budget. That is whatever comes from the outside, which is state revenue, grants, things, ARPA. Those are the kind of things that come in or taxation. Those are our only two sources of money coming into the budget. So, um, capital, all the different capital things, unless they're paid for by a grant or some other outside state or federal program, then there, it all somewhere along the way comes from taxation. Even if we dip into the reserve and say it doesn't affect taxation this year, that money came from taxpayers at some point. Yes.
This year in the budget, it's 245,923 dollars going into the reserve fund. So that's part of the budget.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Pearson? Thank you.
Walter Zalawa, 141 Turnpike Road.
Can you just spell your last name for?
Z A L E W A.
Z A L E W A?
Z A L E W A.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate what the Board of Finance is doing. It's a fine line. And I mean, increases do happen. I can see keeping up with the cost of inflation. Much above that, I mean, I only get a certain percentage of raise. I'm going to grow the air across that everyone else is in, but. And when you start taking that much more out of me, I'm starting to work in a negative fashion. So there's going to be a few places we can cut a little bit more. Well, everybody has wants, but I can't do my wants, so I can't pay my needs. There are basic needs that we need to meet. I understand that there is some increase. Once we go over basic into life, I think we can throw a better comeback and some of them some time for a little bit better.
Thank you. Other public comments? Peter?
Peter Litencich, 97, Trask Road. I want to thank both the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen for working together on this budget. Started out at a very high level of increase, whatever call about three mils. And it seems to be moving in the right direction with the increase we're looking at. I, I would suggest that someone else just did that, some additional decreases in the increase. I don't believe it was a cut anywhere in this budget. But I understand you're managing decreases and increases. And I, I would urge you to consider again, Peter Denock's suggestion on the board of that side, despite we're seeing in through the fuel increase not be incorporated in the budget and to store our MBR in the future, that that be, as he suggested, be funded by the, or, uh, non-recurring lapsing fund under our rest term. I would suggest on the town side, uh, some of the double-digit increases, if you look that carefully, get closer to a bill increase. A particular concern that I have, I see that you got to where you are by cutting capital expenditures, which frequently happens, I understand that. But I, I see when I look at the expenditure side of the, the breakdown of the budget, uh, that was on the town website for this meeting. There's a, a rather staggering increase in what's going into the capital reserve, 168%. That compounds me a bit, and I think would most people. We're paying off the library, which is our largest project. We have not committed to new projects at this time. There was discussion of some of them. But this seems premature to me. Particularly at a time when we're coming out of a pandemic. Unemployment is still relatively high. People are feeling economic pain, some inflationary forces that are now bucketing us along with a few weaknesses, including recesses. This does not seem appropriate to me until there's direction from the town that, yes, we may elect to pursue a large project. I would urge that you revisit that area as well. I think it's a great opportunity to feed that you're getting tonight to revisit this budget in these areas. And along those lines, my final comment, I, I would strongly like to see when the Board of Selectmen meet, just at the call for the town meeting, that we have an opportunity to discuss the conversation and dialogue we have here tonight and then act to send the budget to referendum or send it back to you folks, depending on the will of the legislative body, which is us, the townsfolk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, for the sake of the audience, whether here or online, I just want to clarify a couple of items that you mentioned, Peter. You are correct, there's, uh, the 245 is going into the, uh, capital. That was 345 previously. So we had cut back on the money going into the capital, which is the discussion you heard before about the dump truck. So that was where we got some of the cut of the increase, as you pointed out. We cut back the increase some through there. The CIP had originally intended to expand the capital program to put what CIP felt was responsible growth into the capital program so that we don't hit a steep uphill. Unfortunately, uh, we had to pull that back because of what the overall tax increase was going to be. Uh, but we did also get money from a couple of other sources. As you heard discussed before about the Fund 17 thing, we pulled an extra $50,000 from Fund 17 into, um, the salary budget for the ambulance to help bring down the, what was required in taxation for that. And we also took more money as we typically, we vary each year what we take out of the general fund, which is another bank account, of course. We, we took some more out of that. So we took the money from essentially three different places. Um, reduction in capital, some from Fund 17 and some from the general fund. Um, again, as it is every year, as you've well experienced, it's trying to find a balancing act. But otherwise, points well taken. I just wanted to clarify that for the audience. More public comments? Do we have, do we have people online who would like to make public comment? Matt Clark, you can unmute.
Guys, um, so I just have two questions. First one is, um, so the, the overall increase in taxes is going to be 7.5%. Is that right?
No.
Hey, what is it?
Well, so it, there's, yes, there's net increase to be raised by taxation of 7.94%, which, when you crunch the numbers, comes out to a mil rate change of 1.28%. And, um, which is a 4.2% seven, 4.27% increase in what actually will effectively be taxed.
So is the average person's tax bill, which one of the numbers am I supposed to understand the taxes are going to?
Oh, if your house is assessed at $100,000, that's not appraised and not market value. But if your house is assessed at $100,000, your taxes will go up by $128.
So 128 per 100,000?
Correct.
Okay. Another question I had was, I didn't quote, couldn't quite hear, Peter. Was that, was that 168% increase in, uh, funding of our reserve account? Is that right?
The capital, yes. Right, am I using the right term, capital? Capital reserve.
I'm not sure.
Matt, are you referring to the, uh, the, uh, he was. Yeah. But so Pete is going to the cap, that money is going to the capital reserve, not to the fund balance, which is where we can spend it as needed.
Understand, thank you.
Can I just point out about, also about capital reserve? So back in 2020, 2021, it was 180,000 that came out of there. But then last year, only 92,000 came out. So it's not, it fluctuates depending on what the projects are that we're trying to fund for that year or the next five years. Uh, we look ahead and try to, try to plan for it. So that's what that number represents.
Go ahead there.
Which, I just want to make a comment, I apologize, but, um, on the capital, um, the CIP plan. So the overall, um, cost of that is actually decreasing, not increasing. So while there is a significant increase in the amount of dollars put into the capital reserve, there is a significant, um, decrease in the amount of funding expenditures from capital expenditures, which is a direct line item in the Sullivan's budget. So in this budget, uh, capital reserve went up $154,000 and change. And those capital expenditures went down $148,864. So one looks like we, you know, we, we took money, um, from one area to put into the reserves, but we took less in actual expenditures from that, that particular line item. So yes, one has an increase, but the overall capital spending plan is, is a decrease. It is not an increase.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Although you're spending less money from that town, was the amount of money spent about the same because they used ARPA money to replace that? Or is that an actual decrease in the amount of money spent?
I see the money within the, within this budget. So the CIP, we're talking about the CIP plan, that's different. And the ARPA funds are not considered in the CIP plan. They are separate spending.
So overall capital expenditure could be over across the whole town, could be higher because of the ARPA. That, that was exactly my question.
But the comments made earlier were regarding the significant increase into capital reserve. I simply want to note for the record that there is a decrease in, in other line items that actually offsets that.
Right.
Um, within the, the direct budget that goes, um, specifically to taxation.
And, and ARPA didn't help us with that.
I'm sorry.
ARPA didn't help us. The ARPA funds helped us take some pressure off. And that's exactly what I, yeah.
But, but the overall, to look at one line item and not look at the entire process is misleading.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody else online on the Zoom who would like to speak? Robin Campbell, I see your little yellow hand up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to touch on the, um, increase overall. And, and I know there's concern out there. And I just, I, I feel as an employee of the town, I, I've been with the town of Wellington as an employee since 2009. So I'm over 13 years in, into it. Back in 2013, the then first selectman, um, had requested as a CIP, um, request was to pour a cement floor in the basement. Um, because of budget cuts from years prior, they, um, ran out of storage. We were renting a storage, um, unit down at the stock and lock, but they decided to cut it. So a bunch of files went down into the basement. And, um, 2013 came around, there was moisture down there because of the dirt floor. And the selectman at the time at the CIP, um, meeting in 2013, 2015 was laughed at and said, we don't need to spend that kind of money. So fast forward to 2021, we all had been exposed to mold growing on said files that were sitting down there. Um, they had to, once they finally decided to fund the, um, the basement floor from ARPA funds. Um, but we were all sick. We were sick for like a good week when they were cleaning all the mold out of there. And if, when you guys leave that room today and you walk around the building, you'll see there's a, a stock and lock unit or like a storage unit there. That is full of moldy, um, files that one of the departments has to go through and see if they can fix. Anyways, that's just an example of the can getting kicked down the road. So I understand that you guys have a hard, um, budget to put through. I respect the work that you guys put in, but every year they keep cutting and cutting. And that's just one example. Um, we went a couple of years without raises, not every, all of us, not everybody, but a bunch of us, non-union people went without raises for a couple of years. And we understood that and that, that is, you know, that's water under the bridge. But, um, I do thank you for your hard work. I appreciate what you guys are doing, but I really think that this particular budget should just go to the townspeople and let them decide. I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else in the room?
What company here? Christine's Office, Jared Sartor. I just think that everybody, every department that puts a budget together and presents it to you folks does so in good faith. They know what they need to continue to run their department and what it takes to run this town. I've been here in this building for almost 10 years. Putting budgets together for 10 years. Yes, our current budget is coming in higher. Putting budgets together for ten years. Yes, our current budget is coming in higher this year. That's the way it has to be. We cannot run our department with any less dollars at this point. And I think that's true for a lot of other departments as well. And just, I guess, to reiterate what Robin said is I think it's a decent budget. And truthfully, for this town, there's never going to be a year that people are going to say, oh yeah, this is a great year, let's raise taxes. Nobody wants to raise taxes. We see that, but we also see that we can't continue to put off repairs. We just, we nickel and dime in this town and we've been nickel and diamond for years and years and years. We just cannot continue to do this. Anyway, as I said, I think every department who presents a budget to you does so in good faith. This is what we need right now to have this town continue to run for another year.
I will point out a little budget season trivia. The budget we were just talking about after meeting with the Board of Finance and our questions and suggestions actually got increased because of suggestions from us. Right, there was, that was, we had to go back and we made some adjustments and actually ended up, your budget actually increased. So, um, it isn't always, we're not always in a position of finding something we need to cut out. We sometimes, when we're trying to make good decisions, find something that needs to be added. Any more public comment? I had a hand up in the back, sorry.
Thank you, Peter. Question in order to One would be this ARPA funding. Would it be possible at a town meeting for us to see some summary of that funding and how it impacts our budget, because that might be helpful to us if we sit there and decide what we want to do. That's one question. And then the second question is, I understand that we vote on spending, you guys spend most of your time on the spending side of the budget. But some feedback tonight on what you see in terms of revenue. I looked at what you provided tonight for the meeting and it looked a bit grim. Revenue is flat or declining. I'm wondering what you see moving forward in that area. Fund more things. Will there be revenue in the future to do that? Will that change? You guys see anything there? And can we continue to buy fund balance as far on the rest of the side of the budget to offset the increases?
Let, let me just, yeah, I want to answer one comment on the first question on ARPA. As we all know, after going through this lengthy process, it's kind of not in our purview as Board of Finance. Obviously, the taxpayers, how things are funded is important to us, but ARPA is not really in our hands. So I think there's the potential of confusion if we're presenting as part of the town budget process, the ARPA report. I think it would have to be very carefully kept separate so that people don't confuse the ARPA summary or whatever with being some part of the budget that they might be speaking or voting on. That, that's what I'll say about ARPA. I think we have to be careful how we keep those separate. But then, I mean, I'll certainly defer to board members for any comments on any of this stuff.
The, the, the part about the fund balancing and, and spending the fund balance to keep our mill rate lower and how long we can go to that. We've been in the fortunate position where the, the auditors have suggested that we keep between eight and twelve percent of our total budget expenditures as part of our fund balance. For a while there, we were way above that, and that's why we spent it down last year to keep our, our, and this year, we went to, we tried to go right to the center. We, we hit as close as I think we could to ten percent, to hit between ten and twelve as we could. And so you're, you're right. It, it, the fund balance tends to, to grow a little every whatever reason. And, and so we can use that money, but we want, don't, we don't want to get more tax dollars when we've already taken too many tax dollars. And so that, that's where that's going. And, and I, as far as your revenue projections, I'm guessing that we won't be able to use as much fund balance next year. So that's, that's just a guess.
Other board members, you know, comment on any of that or anything else we've been talking about?
Just some of the critics.
No, 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 I was asking, so you weren't alone?
Just that some of the criticism in the past has been when we've been over that eight to twelve percent margin. That that is in fact unfair to the taxpayers because we're holding on to too much. And that's, that's money that's all, all from taxes. And so that, that intent to correct that Pete's referring to is, you know, stems from that, that that's, that that's out of balance if we're carrying fifteen percent or some of the percentages we have in the past. That's unreasonable, so.
Yeah, I think we were at thirteen percent. And we took a million dollars from that fund balance and put it back into the budget last year, which was your money that we were essentially holding on to, and we were holding on to too much of it. And so we applied it back into the budget, which is why we have had the same, essentially the same mill rate for six years.
Yeah, it's, it's been, since two thousand seventeen, it's been thirty point oh nine. Last year, in, in two thousand twenty-one, tax year, we took it down to twenty-nine point nine nine. So that was like a tenth of a, of a point. And this year, we're talking about thirty-one point two eight. So that's, that's the first increase since seven years, six years.
Six years.
I, I do want to point out that the reason that we had that six-year flat was because we made a big jump trying to cover the teacher retirement benefits because the governor said that we were going to have to fund them. And then, so we funded them because the governor said we should fund them. And then the governor said, now you don't have to, but we had already set our taxes. So we had started collecting way more taxes than we needed to in, in anticipation of something that the governor said was going to happen and it didn't happen.
But I'll point out that of the towns around us, including Ashford, Coventry, Ellington, Mansfield, Stafford, Tallinn, and Union, our rate is the lowest, except in this year, we're a little bit higher than Union. That's it. I wasn't going to go there, Pete.
One budget year, that's under control. Other board member comments on any of the stuff we've been talking about tonight? Anything you want to share before we look to close the hearing? Last call for comments. Erica, I think you would want to say something.
So some of the adjustments made that affected the CIP plan while it decreased what you're putting into capital reserve will cause an, an increase in, in public works, and specifically the lease payments, line items. And an additional twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars would now be needed from that budget to cover the lease payment that we had not originally anticipated. So I would ask you all to consider adding that to the public works budget. I know there seems to be some concern from some in the room that that budget is significantly high. And while it is, there are significant, significant increases in the cost of doing business. Right now, we're seeing that across the board. Public Works having the largest overall budget sees that. The significant number of trees that need to come down added another increase in that budget. So I, I would ask you all to consider increasing the public works budget by twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars.
So, um, so we wouldn't act on that in this hearing right now, but I do want to ask a question on that. Donna, we talked a little bit about this before, about what the right method is to make that lease payment, because the solution we had sort of engineered, if you will, was to take that hundred and twenty-five thousand that's in CIP and use, in whatever portion can be figured out when you work with the vendor. We would, we would use a large portion of it as down payment to reduce the overall lease. And we would save enough to make a lease payment for the remainder, right? So if the lease payment was, if, if we could put a hundred thousand down and the rest of the truck costs a hundred and twenty-five,
Yes.
Then if we assumed that the lease payment was twenty thousand in this case, we'll just say, then we would essentially, well, we would have saved five thousand in that example. But basically, a hundred thousand would be down payment and then the remaining would somehow pay the lease. So what is the best mechanism for us to move that money from capital to make the lease payment? I understand what Erica's saying is if you increase the budget, you're increasing it to cover the lease payment, but then the money doesn't need to be in capital anymore.
So do you want to reduce the amount from capital to make the lease payment?
Well, that was the solution we were discussing. It was if there's a hundred and twenty-five in capital.
Yeah.
So what we originally proposed was pushing the dump truck out one year.
Yes.
But we met a lot of resistance from the Public Works Director and Erica saying we really need that truck.
Yes.
So we decided if we're going to go into that truck, instead of going back to putting the whole two hundred and twenty-five thousand into this coming up budget, we would stay at the hundred and twenty-five. And we would put, for example, a hundred thousand down.
Yes.
Which would make the remaining cost of the truck one twenty-five.
Yes, we put a hundred thousand down for the reserve fund.
And there's still, in what we have put in CIP was one twenty-five. So still twenty-five thousand dollars floating around there. So if we're not going to increase taxation, we should move that twenty-five thousand to cover the lease payment. That was our original intent. That remaining twenty-five thousand would cover the lease payment. So what I'm trying to figure out was our mechanism so that we don't end up just increasing the expense side without countering that with the money we have in capital. Am I making sense how I'm asking it? It looks good in my head.
I know. There's a hundred and twenty-five thousand being leased, there's a hundred thousand being taken out of the reserve fund to pay. That totals two hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is the cost of the truck.
Right.
When you borrow two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, no, when you borrow a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You're going to have to pay two payments of ten thousand dollars each.
Okay, so that's the twenty thousand you were looking for.
So that's the twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so where is the twenty-five thousand dollars? Where is that? Because we're borrowing a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's creating a twenty thousand dollar lease payment.
Yeah.
We're taking a hundred thousand dollars out of reserve, adding it to the money that we are borrowing from the bank by leasing, and we're paying for the truck.
Yeah. And you're wondering where I'm coming up with the extra twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Because, right, so that's a great question. We're, I'm coming up from it because we put one twenty-five in CIP for the dump truck. So if we take a hundred back out for the down payment, we still have twenty-five thousand in CIP.
That was, that was.
She's using one twenty-five and a hundred from reserve. You're saying you had a hundred and twenty-five from reserve and a hundred in the statement?
I'm saying we put a hundred and twenty-five in CIP. That affects the, that affects the yellow box number on CIP.
But wasn't that the placeholder originally when we, we thought, what we were trying to do is, was build a pattern where we would, we have five dumps. We want to replace them every other year. So we put a hundred and twenty-five thousand in in the off year to feed that process of replacing all five trucks over a ten-year span to do it every other year. So that's why a hundred and twenty-five was in there.
Well, the adjustment that was made the other night with the Board of Selectmen voted in their plan was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be leased and a hundred thousand dollars would be taken from the reserve fund.
Yeah, I agree.
For two, a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I agree.
That's what's in the plan.
Right.
So there isn't another twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right, but in CIP, there was already a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. From, coming out of the CIP meeting was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the dump truck. And so what I'm saying is if you're taking a hundred thousand, there's still twenty-five thousand that was supposed to be in CIP unless you reduce CIP by twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, we're saying only a hundred thousand is coming from reserve directly, and then a hundred and twenty-five was
Least.
Least.
I agree. But there is a hundred and twenty-five in the CIP plan.
Not a hundred.
Not a hundred. So what we said in the CIP meeting is, there's a hundred and twenty-five in CIP. Use a hundred of that. Don't talk about it coming from the reserve fund right now. There's a hundred, there's a hundred and twenty-five in CIP. Take a hundred of it, put a down payment on it. You still have twenty-five in CIP. Use that to make the first lease payment.
So we done, we only took a hundred, not a hundred and twenty-five?
Because there was never a hundred and twenty-five in CIP.
Correct.
It was three forty-five and then you reduced it to two forty-five and that's, so that's the one hundred thousand left in CIP.
No.
That's, no?
No, we reduced the transfer into CIP by a hundred thousand, which feels, because the dump truck was two twenty-five.
Yes.
So we knocked it down to one twenty-five.
Yes.
So one twenty-five was still in CIP.
But you didn't, you can't just, that's not really what happened. You reduced the amount going into capital reserve, which is why I said, let's meet again at CIP.
Yeah.
So you can see what reducing that hundred thousand does to the plan. We had a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar project.
Yeah.
And then we decided to divide it up, pay for a hundred thousand out of the reserve, separate that from the money going into the reserve, and then pay for the other hundred and twenty-five thousand in a lease. And that's what we did. So those two items make the two twenty-five, which was the total project cost.
Yes. But the hundred thousand reduction from three forty-five to two forty-five was original when we took the dump truck from two twenty-five to one twenty-five.
But.
And, and I think, I think the, the thought was that the one twenty-five in the lease would be spread out amongst the, the future years, not the current year. So I, I think, I think we're
I think maybe what your intent at your Board of Finance meeting was not what came out of the CIP meeting and eventually voted on at the Board of Selectmen.
But what we voted on the CIP meeting was to spend a hundred for down payment and the remainder on lease payment.
That is exactly what that is, but that creates a twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollar payment that has to come out of the public works budget.
I agree with all that, but the money comes out of CIP because it's already in CIP. We're backing it out.
Oh, so you want to take the lease payment out of CIP?
Yes, yes.
I get it, out of the reserve fund.
Yeah.
Which could come from the reserve fund, right, but we're pulling it out of CIP and rooting it into a lease payment.
So you want to use the reserve fund to pay the lease in year one?
Right, because, because it's a CIP, it's a capital expense.
Well, even our leases are always capital expenses.
Right.
But they go into the public works budget, and I think most people probably don't recognize.
Yes, I, I agree. I'm saying, how, we've already funded it in CIP, how do we back it out of CIP and plug it into public works? I don't want to just increase public works because then we're just increasing expenditures. I want to pull the money out of CIP. So we're moving the effect on taxation from one budget to another instead of just increasing expenses.
And then next year, are you going to take the lease payment out of the public works budget? This is a one-time thing, you're going to take it out?
This is this year to rationalize this year, right? And then when CIP meets next year, CIP decides either we're going to fund the whole thing and pay it off, or we're going to just assume it's lease payments that goes up in the top and gets funded in the budget and we work with the So yes, it increases the budget and, and so you'll have that. You'll have that increase will already show next year. Yes, it'll be, it'll be an increase in next year's budget unless CIP comes up with cash and says, let's pay it off.
Because the alternative was, the, the original plan was to pay for all two twenty-five out of capital reserve.
Yes.
So, so really.
Right, and the idea was to, to cut the effect on taxation by knocking that from two twenty-five down to one twenty-five.
Right. I, I get it now. So the spending out of the reserve it's going to be one hundred thousand plus the lease payment.
Yes, this is the down payment plus the lease payment, right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that I could not explain that in ways that made sense. I can see it in my head just fine.
But if you were factoring it with the down payment of one twenty-five, then the lease payment is probably a little bit more than twenty. But maybe it all works out perfectly. I think she, she did, we did a hundred, leasing a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, so she factored the down payment as a hundred, yeah. I think it's, I think it's right.
The two payments of over just over ten thousand.
And somehow it works out perfectly.
Sure.
A little bit better.
No, it works out perfectly, it would be a free dump truck. This is nowhere near that.
I was there with you.
Okay, so then Donna, if you're kind of working on figuring that out in our meeting that comes after this hearing, we should make probably some adjustments into our budget to make that work, right? We, we would increase public works, or would we not have to increase public works because we'll just do it out of the reserve? Okay, so do we? Okay.
I mean, I could find, I could find a use for the twenty thousand.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It wouldn't be needed.
Right, so that's what I was originally trying to drive at the beginning of this, do we actually need to change the expense budget?
Only if we need to pay for it in the way that was proposed by.
Okay, okay, so are we okay with doing it this way? We don't have to change the expense line on public works? Because we're gonna pay it out of reserve this year and we'll address it in the budget next year, how to make the lease payments. That's okay?
Yes, I'm good with that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to revise the CIP plan.
But you still are showing the one twenty-five in the CIP plan, which is fine, so it doesn't change the bottom line, it just changes where you're using the hundred and the twenty. Right? It changes where they're going to, but it's still the same in the plan. I shouldn't have asked that, we were good.
It changes the plan, right? It changed, I mean, where they come from changes the plan.
It changes what the plan says, but it doesn't change the bottom line, it's the same dollars in the plan.
The yellow highlighted number is the same? Is that what you're getting?
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
The yellow box number is the same.
The yellow box.
And the public works budget does not have to change.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
Okay.
Have you factored it into your?
Oh, well, I, I have it in the yellow box now, but I'm gonna take it out and redo it so that, that it's not gonna impact general fund. Right now I have it impacting general fund, but I'm gonna change that.
Okay.
So there's no impact on general.
It'll go back to what the CIP plan looked like last week, which was a hundred. Yes.
What was the number? Do you have it memorized?
No.
I, I know what it is.
I haven't yet sorted out how to say this. Okay, you're feeling good, we, we.
Oh, good. I know, I know what you wanna say.
Okay. Anything else for the public hearing? Okay, last call online, anybody? Last call in the room. Second? All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand and hold it up so we can be sure we got all the votes.
Hi.
Hi, it's unanimous. It's unanimous. Okay, the hearing is closed. You need a second, so we may have to get started on our next meeting here. Why don't you pause the recording? For everyone online, we'll be coming back in about five minutes. To the right of the green.
Just hit the pause.
Okay. Chairman Mike McCoo calling to order the Town of Arlington Board of Finance Special Meeting immediately following the budget hearing on Tuesday, April fifth, twenty twenty-two, time is eight twenty-five P M. We do not need to see alternates, we'll move to present to speak. I'll start on the video screen, anybody present to speak, coming in on Zoom? So that's a no, anyone present to speak in the room?
Mr. Beal? Hi, Jim, you look Laurel Drive. Uh, just one comment about mill rates. Mill rate is a function of what you need to fund your buzz, budget and the taxable base. So we're talking all the time about one side of the equation. Spending, 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 spending. The other side is you gotta bring in new businesses, you gotta really bump up economic development. You need a lot more, lots and more Dollar Generals and Dunkin' Donuts and things like that that they need spent. So, one little comment about the building.
Thank you. Other present to speak? Okay. Moving on to new business budget discussion. All right, this is amongst us. Excellent. What, uh, what do we have for feelings? I think we've heard some various different opinions. I think we've spent since the first week, the first Thursday of February grinding through this budget.
What do we think? Do we think? I only have one thing and I don't wanna reduce anything. Don't get me wrong here, all right? I'm not reducing nothing. I'm not even reducing the increase in nothing, but I would like to move that we uh make a budget adjustment of sixty-five thousand dollars on the K eight education. Uh, every year we fund our K eight at, at a rate and they tell us what they wanna spend the money on and that's great. And a lot of what they wanna spend the money increase on this year is fuel oil. And fuel oil, I am hoping looking into a crystal ball that it doesn't stay at five dollars a gallon and then it comes down. However, with the K eight budget, unlike any other budget, we deal with the minimum budget requirement. It's a ratchet, it can only go up.
I'm gonna interrupt you for just a second. Did you actually make a motion?
Yes.
Sorry. Make the motion so we can second and then you can have your discussion.
Okay, and I move that we reduce the, the uh increase the amount increased change on our budget here by sixty-five thousand dollars.
You wanna reduce the, the request?
The.
By sixty-five thousand.
Correct.
Okay, so that's your motion.
Right.
Okay, do we have a second? Now, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The reason I picked sixty-five thousand dollars is sixty-five thousand is the amount increase in the fuel oil budget. MBR does not allow us to ever ratchet back down. The budget only ratchets up and I'm hoping that fuel oil increase is a temporary thing, so if we ratchet up sixty-five thousand dollars to cover this year's fuel oil, we're gonna be paying that sixty-five thousand every year from here to whenever we get our MBR readjusted, which could be in perpetuity, could be when, if we get a new school, could be a lot of things. But that, every year, the superintendent comes to us and says I have a little extra money, it's not returned to the town, it's returned to the non-lapsing fund. So if they took that sixty-five thousand dollars out of the non-lapsing fund, which is similar to Fund Seventeen, similar to our, our unappropriated balance that we can use to, to cover those bumps so that we don't pay for this forever. Now, we don't see where the non-lapsing fund is, but as I understand it, right now it's at about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and they've got a ceiling of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They can't even return money to us anymore, except that they've taken fifty thousand dollars out of it to cover part of their budget already. I'm just saying, take a little more out. That'll leave them more than a hundred thousand dollars. The hundred thousand dollar mark is important because that's what the special ed um budget is, is placements cost at maximum. So that would cover one special ed student and this covers the bump without creating the MBR.
Uh, Lisa?
Um, thank you. Um, I, um I think it's interesting what Peter is saying, however, I think the cost of life is increased, as Peter noted, and I don't see taking sixty-five thousand dollars out of the K through eight budget in a wisher and a prayer that gas fuel prices will drop back down is fiscally prudent. I think that, um um Steve, um Phil Stevens, sorry about that, has always been very forthcoming with the town and I think that um um contrary to what Peter said, I think that the Board of Education has always been very transparent with us and where they can return money, they should and they do. And um, and I think we all know, everybody on the Board of Finance is very, very aware that the K through eight budget is so uh tied to benefits and to salaries of teachers that when you cut sixty-five thousand dollars out of a budget, you are directly taking it out of supplies, books and any um beneficiary, benef, benefits to this, to the students, so um I disagree.
I, I just, I just wanna say one thing to that, uh Lisa, is that I, I don't wanna take it out of books. I, I said that at the beginning of.
I know, but there's no other room, Peter.
Reduce the amount of spending that they're doing.
Right.
I just want the money from the non-lapsing fund instead of front, which has already come from the taxpayer instead of taking new money from the taxpayer. The way I see this, this is very much like taking your child to the bookstore and they wanna buy a book and usually I, I gave you money for books and they go, yeah, but I wanna spend your money and keep my money in case I want more books later. So we, we got to use the money that we've already given them and it's gone to the non-lapsing fund and to, to, just like we reduced our budget from fourteen percent uh in, in our, to, to ten percent so that we were in that, that, that sweet zone, we can't let that non-lapsing fund get so close to full that they can't return money.
I hear you.
At some place.
I hear you and I think, I think, I hear your argument. I hear it clearly, but it sounds penny wise and pound foolish to me. I really just think there isn't enough revenue in K through eight. Nobody's packing away monies and sixty-five thousand dollars to one family and one person in town may seem like a lot. But after you take all the children in K through eight and divide sixty-five thousand amongst them, it's very small. So, I, I, I disagree.
Um, just, I wanna make one clarification, we cannot just so everyone is clear, we cannot decide what to do with the non-lapsing fund here. Right, it's, I just wanna make sure everyone knows that. It's not within our purview. We can't say go and get it from a non-lapsing fund. We can certainly suggest that.
And that's what I'm doing, I'm suggesting it.
But just so everyone's clear in the audience and on the board, that is in the purview of the Board of Ed. Christina?
Um, Peter, so they, what happens if they hit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I don't, I don't know, I don't think we've ever done it.
Well, but you said that they can't.
I, I, from what I understand, the, the non-lapsing can, fund can't go over two hundred.
Okay, hang on, hang on, I wanna let Phil, Phil.
So the cap is, was created by, um, when the agreement was the policy was written, um, the cap is not statutory. The town set the cap at three percent. So you're basically following the Board of Education policy that says it, that it can't go over three percent of I, what I believe in Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, of the current uh fiscal year budget. So it is pretty close to maxed out right now. It's around two hundred and fifty or two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars will come out, um, and it's the first year this has ever been done. Um, fifty thousand is planned to come out of the non-lapsing fund um in next year's budget to pay, to offset next year's budget. So we're, we're over, I think, seven hundred thousand dollars in, in offsets and grants, non-lapsing fund, things like that. So it can't go over that, but it doesn't mean we can't return money. All it means is the Board of Education does not have the ability to ask the Board of Finance to put more money into the non-lapsing fund. So what was asked last time was um basically to, to max it out, which is what you did. And so if we had a hundred thousand dollars left at the end of this year, we could not ask you to put any of those funds into the non-lapsing fund unless money had been spent out of the non-lapsing fund and even still, it's up to the Board of Finance to decide whether that, you wanna do that or not. The second thing I wanted to say is the average outplacement is approximately a hundred thousand dollars, but by no means is it a cap. If you have someone move in that's residential, you could be looking at a half a million dollars depending on what it is. If it's a res- residential outplacement. So typically outplacement um in a, in a placement around us with transportation, you're looking in the one thirty range. Um and again, is there money in that for that purpose? Yes. Um, but I, I, I think the point is that we've been, the Board of Ed is, has been very transparent with what we've returned, what we've asked for and, and how we've spent our dollars. So I just wanted to share those two things.
Thank you. Or I, I, I don't think there's any doubt that they've been transparent. I just you know, I, I, I just worry about our MBR and, and paying for temporary problems forever.
With, I, I'd just like to ask, when has the MBR handcuffed us and how long has it been? Cause it, it hasn't happened in all the years I've been.
It's nice. They ask for an increase every year, so it, it, it doesn't bother, we just can't spend less than last year.
It's going to increase every year because it's contractual. So, so I'm saying, given what the reasonable you know, expectation is of school budget going up every year, has the MBR ever been a factor that, that restricted us? That pushed us into up budgeting?
Ten or twelve years at least.
Right.
In fact, then they were at zeros a lot and, and the reason we're at zeros that we put them down.
So because we're, we're blessed in that we have a very, you know, a school board that is transparent, a superintendent that's transparent that, that, that shows us very clearly and gives back num, month, unspent funds in the budget. I, and, and the fact that the non-lapsing is supposed to be a, a, a fund that is there for needs during the school year and I don't see them spending it down on whatever they, you know, whatever the mood strikes, I see it, I see it being carefully looked at. I just feel this is a, a false construct. I mean, it's, it's already, it's a non-issue to me. And that, and the, part of the reason being that Phil locked in those prices, he locked them down really cheaply. It's not five dollar a gallon gas that we're looking at as far as.
It's still a sixty-five thousand dollar balloon. That, it, it's a sixty-five thousand dollar balloon, even though we're not paying five thousand.
But I'm saying, you, you know, it's all, it's all sort of in pursuit of this MBR being like making us inflate our school budget and I'm just not seeing that play out. I don't see that play out. So I mean, it's not ever in, in the experience that I've had in town, so I'm um, that's why I don't like it. I feel like we're, we're kind of like, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, I'm, uh, MBR was the factor that were creating the non-lapsing education.
Right, so if, if I remember right, and I'm gonna ask Phil in a second to confirm this, but part of part of exactly what you're saying is that they've kept the special ed budget, outplacement budget placeholders low by knowing it was in the non-lapsing fund. So Phil, if you could confirm, do you have any placeholders? And you do not have any in the regular budget right now, zero. So the only, the only placeholder you have, the only cushion you have is in the non-lapsing fund.
That's correct. The only placeholder we hold for anything is insurance. That is for staff members, which um is there, but there's no, and you'll see a lot of districts that will keep a you know, that a hundred thousand dollar price tag as a placeholder for special education. As IAPs change, if there's an outplacement, you have something to pay, you, you know, you have a fallback. We don't do that. We budget exactly um as we believe we're going to be. Um, when we write our budgets in, in December and I, you know, PPT meetings, parent meetings for special education happen in, in April or May or even June. If there's a change, we're trying to balance within our budget to, to do that. Um, and so no, there's no placeholder for special education in our budget.
Thank you.
I'm just I get what you're saying, Peter, but, but.
We're gonna spend the money anyway.
Fifty out for the very first time because they, they recognize the same thing you do. I, I think they've already taken that step. I don't know that we need to push them even more. Um, and I honestly don't know enough about their budget and their, their concerns and their discussion about it to, to, to undo or do more than that, so.
I.
But I get you. I know what you're saying. All right.
I'm gonna agree with that. I, I, I understand the idea of trying to keep the MBR increased from continually increasing. Um, but I think with their budget at one point, something I think, I think they're really tight already and I think they, um, with the um, non-lapsing fund, I almost said MBR, that, um, the non-lapsing fund being at essentially two hundred thousand once this budget kicks in, um, is probably the one buffer they need. And if they don't use it in this year, then it's still sitting there next year and it's a new conversation for us.
Can I, can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
I, I think the other thing is, is, um, you know, we look at that, I think the board looks at that as something where we don't have to come back to the Board of Finance and ask you for money as well. So I mean, you're, we're talking about special education, but you know, you know, we had a flood this year at Center School with a pipe break. Um, and twenty thousand dollars is gonna come out of the budget. The board's not coming back to you asking for that money. We're trying to find ways where, you know, if we don't use our insurance placeholder, we're paying for that, those funds, using that money. Um, eventually, we're gonna have to figure out some sort of site, and, and the town has already done it, some cybersecurity insurance here. Um, and we need some significant work done to be able to do that. The discussion is, is going to be around using non-lapsing funds instead of putting it into the budget. Because that's where I agree with Peter, is that you put a sixty thousand dollar project into the budget for a one-shot deal, it, it increases it, or you have to take sixty thousand from something else. And so that's what the purpose of that non-lapsing fund is to, you know, the one-shot deal where you're not, um, you know, gonna keep raising the budget. So we're, we're trying to look at that money as, as the pocket to pay for those things that are one-time only. Um, and, and, you know, not hit the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
Is it possible to be both sides? Um, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Peter here, um, at some point, this is gonna compound, it's gonna compound year over year. Is it possible to look at it from, you know, a little, a, a, a small bit, you know, let's say maybe it's split in half, thirty thousand, thirty thousand, using round numbers, um, you know, just, I mean, as we continue to compound this, every year we have to increase this budget. So just project it out ten years, let's say. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's gonna get up there. Um, it's gonna, and if a project comes up in a, you know, year five, you know, we're, we're gonna drain that fund and need to replenish, um, and at, at the same time, increasing.
But we're not increasing it because of the MBR. That's my issue. Yeah, it does increase.
There's no, the increase has nothing to do with the MBR, decrease has to do with the MBR. It's just that, you know, you, you have a floor and you cannot drop below that floor with the MBR. You, you, you're allowed to increase as much as you want every year.
And it does.
And it does.
Ninety-seven percent contract.
Right, and, but like I said in the last meeting, a lot of contracts are written by the Board of Ed. I mean, they, they've got some, some control over, over their, their contractual agreements. The biggest contract being salaries and, and, uh, kind of, it's teacher salaries, and that's a hundred percent in their purview. I mean, they, they, they're the ones sitting across the table. I mean, you, we don't want our teachers to, to starve to death, and we don't want them to, to suffer anymore than anybody else, but, you know, that's, that's, you know, you, you, you can't give all your people a big raise and say, well, it's a contract. It's a contract problem. You see what I'm saying? I, I, I may be.
I do, because I think you were just at the, at the town contract.
I was, and.
And that was.
And we.
A lot more than the school was.
No, it was exactly what the school was.
So.
I don't have a certified contract.
Oh, sorry.
So just talking about percentages, the sixty thousand dollars we're talking about in this motion right now would be, uh, sixty-five thousand, thank you, um, would be approximately three quarters of a percent of the K through eight budget. So.
Decrease and increase?
No, if the sixty thousand is worth three quarters of a percent. Right, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out the compound thing. You know, what does this mean next year? So, if the, if the natural increase in the budget because of contractual obligations and whatever else is at least three quarters of a percent next year, then what this does to MBR becomes irrelevant.
Right, because you.
Because the budget's gonna have to grow by more than this amount anyway, I guess is the point, I think.
But I, you know, that's, that's not my, I mean, that's, that's part of my issue with the rest of my issues is, is, you know, we, 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 we take our, our non, our, our, our fund balance, and we use that as our buff. Fire departments use Fund seventeen, and that's their buff. I, I'm just thinking that the non-lapsing fund should be the buffer for K eight education.
I think it is in other things. The question is, is it gonna be for fuel, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Are we ready to take it to a vote?
I just want to say, being new to the board, I like to thank Phil for all the hard work. Um, I can absolutely see the transparency. I can absolutely see, you know, the time and effort put into your budget, and again, um, thank you. Thank you for what you do.
So, the sixty-five would only be relevant if the gas prices drop back to what they are now, which that's probably not gonna happen. We don't, we just don't know what it's gonna be, so. And I, I do think they are using it as a buffer. They're using it, they're fifty thousand dollars. And they're not gonna come back to us asking for special ed outplacement costs in the middle of the year, which has happened in the past, and that's why this is a really good thing to have. So.
And I would say, as, as our, as that fund balance sort of declines, I mean, because we're taking it down to, you know, to the mid-ground, um, that that's, that's something that we haven't had in the past. We've had a, we've had more of a, more of a, a balance than we do, so we're gonna be less able to handle everything that's, that comes.
You're saying in the town's fund balance, because we've reduced that some, we'd have less flow for other things, okay?
Our buffer is gone.
Our buffer is reduced.
Reducing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as we heard from Bob earlier, Fund seventeen buffers. Everybody's.
Okay, any more discussion? Man, are you ready to call the vote?
Yeah, do I just call?
Yes, uh, yes, you, yes, these members at the table are the voting members.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Let her.
Alright, Joe? That's Joe, right?
As a refresher, the motion is to reduce the education budget by sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, Steph? No. Pete?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Christina? No. Mike?
No. Because we have to, we're required to, um, log every person's vote, and if it's not gonna be unanimous vote, we have to get an individual vote from each member.
As long as you're doing a hybrid.
It's because of the current situation we're in.
Hey, you got, you got, you got on a mast.
We're getting a thousand dollars. We had to vote on the question that was in front of us.
Okay.
Well, you can make the motion.
Okay.
Or you want me to make the motion?
Do we have something percolating over here?
Yeah.
We have a lot of table talk, which, when you're playing poker is bad.
Okay, what other discussion do we have?
Based on what Joe said before, instead of sixty-five, make it thirty. Same motion, thirty thousand dollars. So argument is the same.
So Pete is moving to reduce the education budget by thirty thousand dollars, right?
Well, we, you just, I, I think the total budget would remain the same. They just take it from different funding.
No, our, our budget.
That would be our budget, yes.
Yes. Okay.
And none of my arguments have changed, so I, I don't need any more discussion.
Okay, do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Hey, let's vote.
Joe?
Oh, yes.
Steph? No. Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Christina? No. Mike?
No. Any more budget, uh, discussion or motions, adjustments? The, which, what thing?
Mic math truck?
No, the mic math truck is exactly what's here.
Okay, so. They, they, the Erica math, math budget was a change.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. No, we don't, because once we, once we got everyone speaking in the correct language, the budget is okay the way it is. Yeah, okay. All right, anything else in new business budget discussion or budget adjustments? Okay, that's the end of new business correspondence. Anything I got, you guys got? President to speak.
Laurie Semperbont. Laurie Semperbont, Turnpike Road. Um, I appreciate the discussion. I just want to remind people that, um, you know, Board of Ed at any point could get three outplacements. We had three that left. I mean, you never know. So having that buffer is really important, um, and the argument about the, um, you know, the fuel costs and the MBR, and, you know, Pete, when you say that, that contractual cost can be decided, it's not that easy to, you can't come in with zero percent increases because it's gonna go to arbitration and the town's gonna lose. So, you know, the, the sixty-five thousand, we're next year, we're pretty much guaranteed to spend at least that much more money in the contractual obligation. So, you know, it, it, it seemed a little bit, I, I understand your argument about if fuel costs go down, but it sounds a little bit, again, like we're nickel and diming and beating up on the Board of Education. So I'm glad that, that your motion did not pass, but I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Any other presence to speak? Anybody on Zoom present to speak? Am I missing somebody?
Pete here.
Oh, your hand was right behind Alex. I wasn't seeing you. Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
I, I really please, uh, to be here at the public meetings tonight, or a public sharing. I think it's very important for the planning to get deep, uh, problem down to people in the budget process. And for that reason, I'm disappointed that no action was taken following the discussion. Exactly, that's important to do. I hope that you listen carefully at the town meeting and recognize that townspeople have concerns and all we're done. Agree, disagree? The opposing point of view, but I think it's important that you listen to the townspeople.
Anybody else present to speak? Anybody online in Zoom land? Last call for president to speak. Okay, Good and Welfare, uh, next step in this process is town meeting on, see, I had the day memorized, but by the time we got here.
You said a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a couple too many times on the mic math.
Yeah, I got lost. I lost it in the mic truck. April nineteenth, seven PM, Old Town Hall.
Really?
Will not be, uh, hybrid.
Okay, so anybody out there in Zoom land, keep an ear on that. It will not be hybrid for the town meeting on, uh, April nineteenth. It will be at the Old Town Hall.
Which is just the town.
Which is the town hall. That's correct.
Because this is the T O V.
Right. Yes, okay. We are very close to the end of the budget season. I want to thank everybody for the hard work. Anyone who's provided input from the town, it does matter. Thank you. Anything else for the good order, or good of the order?
Move to adjourn?
Second, all those in favor, say hi. Right, it's unanimous.